I will call the June 23 work session to order. Join me for a moment's silence of the pledge.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty, and justice for all.
Move on to citizens comments. We haven't been here online. Okay. Public safety projects update.
Yeah, we get started here. We're using a new process here for our presentations. So I'm trying to.
You should be able to just area agreements here.
You guys have great pictures.
Yeah.
Yeah, they look very nice.
Okay, so a couple of updates here on some public safety projects that we have worked. First one is for the first center. So we have started with the membership drive, trying to push this out to some cities. We have. We have.
I didn't bring my reading.
Yeah.
Better, that's better.
There you go. So we finalized the flyers in May. You guys took a look at the draft of those and then we sent those out in early June. We've so far received responses back from three cities that are looking at the capital level. Apple Valley, Farmington, and Northfield. We're also getting some interest in some other cities as well, so we're going to keep moving forward with that. This is the final version of the flyer. The basic system of general information regarding the site. It outlines the two membership benefit levels that we had talked about previously at a work session and what that means, the potential memberships. It also included the general facility pricing. This is kind of the all of card. If a city doesn't want to become a member, they still have the opportunity to buy in the space with this kind of all of card, all of card pricing. And we also added kind of the same pricing concept for fire departments as well, to reserve space and use the area for fire department training. The flyer just has the general facility that's been included with kind of our memberships and advertisements for the facility. So we also, since now that we've got the membership starting, we've started to start looking at membership agreements. So this is just a rough draft, the first page of a membership agreement that working through with Campbell, Cuness, and Police Department and staff. Working with that, just trying to come up with a boilerplate that we can then send out to each of the cities and then work through that with them individually on what that agreement means for them. Real quick, before Alan goes on from that, just one note. Farmington has expressed interest tensibly in prepaying their entire 10 years. They have their fire, their police state, or their fire, the Public Safety A did the state gave a couple of years ago. I think they're still sitting on there. And they need to use it. So if that's the case, that would be a very good thing from a cash flow perspective, from a standpoint. One of the things that we're investigating, I know Lieutenant Hanson and our IT department are working through, we're trying to find a way to maybe have an online facility scheduling process. I'm not sure if everyone remembers that. Possible, but we're investigating that. Again, this is just a snapshot of a screen grab that shows the very first rough draft of that, so that's also one of the works. Website. This is the website. I was going to click on this, but I'm not going to do that because I don't want to screw up the presentation here. But we also have a website out there that's live and active. It's very similar to the flyer that I just went through. It pretty much mirrors that. It just is a place where we can send everybody that has some general information on the first center, where they can grab that and show that with their individual cities or facilities that are looking at, by members. Staffing. So we're looking at having this operational by this time next year, so we have to look at, try and come up with some staffing concepts. Right? So far, we're looking at putting together a job description and duties for a first center manager. We're going to model it similar to a hero center. We're actually meeting this police department staff and our HR staff are meeting with hero center manager later this week. Just to kind of pick his brain on how we set up the staffing, what does that mean from, what are their duties? How many part-time people, that kind of stuff. So that'll be very helpful for us and work with budgeting for 2026, putting together the staff in the site. Construction. Construction started in May, so we designed and built the stormwater basin in May. That went very well, very quick. We had some good weather for that. You may have seen some of that construction. That basin reaches all the way down to Cedar Avenue. So if you're driving on Cedar Avenue right before in May, you have seen some construction going on there along the creek. And that was the construction of Stormwater Basin. So that's been built, constructed, and stabilized. We also started demolition of the old public works site in May, and as you remember, that was the old previous public works site. We did some research, after we started doing some demo out there, I started doing some research. We acquired that property in like late 60s, 68 or so. We built the initial public works building in early 70s. So that was a public works site for 50 years, so keep that in mind as we go through this next part of the presentation. So during, during this demo, we did run across seven buried tanks that we found out there at the site. They all were in good shape, oddly enough, except for one, of course. Which we, it did leak about five gallons of diesel fuel that was in it. We had that mitigated, the site cleaned up. We reported that the MPCA just went through the process of completely cleaning up the site and mitigating that. So it was a little bit unexpected, but we've worked through it and we're okay. So that was the first surprise. And then, as part of the building came down, we found a buried pipe, a couple of buried pipes underneath the building that were wrapped in asbestos insulation. So these were old ventilation pipes for who knows what from the old building. Again, this part of the site had to be mitigated, disposed of properly and cleaned up. So that again was also fixed and they are repaired for cleaning up the soil. So we moved into constructing the warehouse portion of the project. The foundation of that was being dug. We started running into a couple of piles of buried debris. And then we ran into a couple more, and then we ran into a couple more. So we had that all tested. We've had WSB and Braun on site continuously testing this stuff, making sure it's, it's clean stuff. It ended up thankfully being just old construction debris, some tires, just stuff from the 70s. Unfortunately, that got buried out there as, as the site was developed as a public works project. So here's some pictures showing kind of what we found out there. Some buried pipes. There was a water heater that was buried out there, so it's just junk. But again, it was tested. It's been cleaned and we mitigated and cleaned up the site and brought in clean stuff. This picture is entertaining for some people. So if you look real closely on this, you'll see a track or a tread there. If you look really closely, you'll see a 1973 Skidoo snowmobile.
Wow.
So there's just like a giant home, everybody working on the project, threw their stuff in it and covered it up.
Could be. Or it was a place whenever the city picked up stuff around the city, you had to dump it and just dump it. Again, thankfully it wasn't anything too crazy. It was clean debris and we were able to mitigate and kind of clean it up. So unfortunately, because of that cleanup and some of the mitigation we had to do with Braun and WSB, the testing just takes time to do that. It just takes a little bit more. We probably lost about 30 days of the project, but RJM, our construction manager, feels if I make that up still within the timeframe. So we always build some cushion in that project schedule so that when instances like this come up, we've got some, we've got some space to fit it in. So it's all good. It's, it's been moving forward this week and end of last week and first part, well, first couple of days of this week. They've been fixing the pad for the main building. They've been digging foundation for that and it's been clean. So keep your fingers crossed that keeps going for them. So the main foundation of the new building is primarily in the same space as the old building, so we think we're, we're in good shape. So we'll see as it goes on. Just some miscellaneous items on this project. At least before I was in the process of reviving the VR system, that's like a three-screen VR electronic system with the, I don't know if you guys put a headset on or not, but it's a system where they can go in and it's a virtual reality. They've been in the process of digging into that and finding out what's the best system for the best bang for our buck on that. We're also getting ready to purchase the movable, or advertise for purchasing the movable wall system. So that's the area that's the reality-based section of the training center where it's a movable wall system, so different scenarios can be set up for fire and police both. It's an area that can be pumped in with smoke, so it can be a confidence course for the fire department. Sound and lights to have multiple different scenarios that the police department can run through. So that movable wall system will be going up for a bid here the next couple of weeks. And then also the fire department confidence course. It's on the second story of the, of the second floor of the portion of the first center. That's a confidence course that the fire department in the old facility had built themselves on a plywood lumber. We're going to do it a little bit better this time, and Mike is working with RJM and with LED, L E D A L Y to design it. And now the construction crew has spent it to build it for them to their spec. So that'll be a great upgrade for the fire department, and that's in the process of being designed and out too. And the last thing for this project is the fiber extension. We're working with the county. We just have one little section that we need to work with the county to do kind of a fiber swarf to be able to extend fiber to the site. So that's the works with IT. That hopefully will be moving forward. So that's the first center. Any questions on that?
So the Apple Valley, like Farmington, Northfield, are they thinking police and fire or just?
Just police.
Have we had any interest in any other fire departments?
Most of the departments that I've talked to would be more of a rental.
Okay.
The dollar amount to, to invest in that for the use would be, or third investment, that makes sense.
Yep. Makes sense. Very good. So we're still thinking in spring. Spring of 26.
Yes. Hopefully by June of 2026, the operation.
My only question about the first center was, we had the federal, our federal update on money potentially coming our way. There were two different numbers on the top there. Does that mean the lower one is the one we're looking at, or are they both separate?
They're both requests. Yeah, so between Tina Smith, Amy Khochar, and you Craig, they all submitted different amounts to go through their various processes. So if we don't have to get rectified, what matter?
So it'll become one number? It's not that these are separate pools.
If we're to come together, it would be.
Yeah, it's not three separate pools. We would get one. Got it. I've, I have been hearing that it's more likely than not that there will be a CRO this year with stuff. Better today than I did 10 days ago.
The next project is the fire station, the fire station being proposed. So right now, we've just been working with CNH Architects and looking at multiple designs. And stuff that I'll show you today is, is very rough. It's very preliminary. It's not going to be what it's starting to end up looking like. I just, but this is kind of one of the sketches that we've been looking at that could have been multiple. Just take it with a little bit of grain salt that this is not set in stone by any means. But, so we've been meeting with them for about eight weeks. We're going through multiple building layouts. We toured some fire stations in the area, Plymouth, Princeville, and Apple Valley. That kind of gave us a good idea of what the, you know, the spatial areas can look like and what different sizes of building, of offices and bays and all that. And that was very helpful, probably more for us novice person than it would be for the fire department personnel. But it was helpful for us to kind of look through all that. So this is again, a sketch of the building. If you, and just as a reminder, this not only will be a new fire station with the professional fire station staff working and living here, but it also will be the headquarters for the fire department. So this will be the new administrative areas of the fire department. So the portion kind of in the green and the darker gray will be the administrative section. Areas kind of in the lighter gray and the blue, or it's going to be more of the staffing for the department itself. And the stuff you see in the orange, that's the, the bays of the fire station. It is, it will be two stories, at least a section of it will be two stories. This is the second story area. This is the dormitories that are being proposed right now. Living quarters, the kitchen at, workout room. Basically everything they need to live there 24/7 if needed. And then the area in the orange, the second story of the, of the bay. Below this is kind of the decontamination area when the fire department staff comes back, fire, fire call. They go in the decontamination area, clean off their stuff, hang their things up, clean the area. There's equipment where we carry it down there. Multiple things, Mike can always talk much better about this than I can. But this second story area is, is, is part of the, of the, that center bay. It'll be a hose tower will be in the upper top area as well as some training space. And then some mechanical space that's kind of towards the bottom part of the picture.
So when it's a second story, it's just like narrow? It's not a full second story? I'm a little confused.
Yeah, so that orange area would be the same height as the, as the bays for the trucks. It'll tower between two bays. Yeah. The ceiling will go, for the bays will go up two stories basically.
Oh, oh, okay. Thank you.
Internally, there'll be two floors internally in that section.
Okay.
And no basement level?
That's it.
There's no base, this is all on slab on grade?
Yes, no basement.
Not architect, will you go back for a second? Is there any value in being able to have like, feel a walk between those floors on like a bridge, or does it not matter?
No, there'd be no need for that.
Okay.
So the next is, so a couple of weeks ago, the council directed staff to move forward with purchasing the Fisher property. That's a 12 acre site in the northeast corner of Grand B and 179th. The closing, tentative closing date for that will be this Friday, so we're moving forward with that. As part of that, then we have hired our HKG, HKGI to do some site planning for that, to work with CNH Architects as we move forward with designing the building. As part of this, we're also looking at potentially locating a satellite water treatment facility on the site. So we've hired Black and Beach as part of their skillset. They will design that. So there's multiple consultants that are going to be helping us lay out the site to make sure that we fit everything out there that we want to. And still have a goal of preserving a portion of the property, potentially something else in the future.
Yeah, so to that, like on the southern, closer to the water tower, we can try to maximize that use rate so that we're.
You're talking about access. Yeah, I'll get in that here in a second. So that's what I was mentioning. So some of the hardest, maybe more of the most defining things on this site is going to be access. And how we get access to the fire department onto the site or from the site. 179th Street is, is a little tough, tougher than what we had anticipated. So as you move east or west on 179th Street, the westbound lane is at a lower elevation than the eastbound lane. So we're like this in the lanes. So that middle concrete median is at a slope. And that slope doesn't flatten out going towards the west until right about, and you're getting in the turn lanes for Grand B, like so right around this area. Well, you can see where our access point needs to be. So we've got a meeting set up with the county to talk to them about what we can do on 179th Street. Kind of an internal discussion as well in the fire department about, is it safe even to go out on 179th Street? We've got turn lane for Grand B, we've got turn lane for 179th Street. 179th Street itself is a very busy street. So we're still looking at concepts of having some kind of access on the 179th Street, but it's probably going to be pretty tough for us to get there, but we're still looking at it. In relation to Mayor, your question of trying to maximize the use of that southern portion, southern portion of the property next to the water tower. We're still looking at doing something there, no matter if it's on 179th Street, access on 179th Street, or if we push it all to Grand B. We're going to try to maximize that property, probably the Stormwater Basin. Because everything slopes to the south. So this is just one concept. Then mentioned access on 179th, but then having a secondary one on to Grand B. This is a concept where it's all on, on the Grand B, as you can see it. And this is, again, this is very sketch. Don't get too critical about this because it's not going to look like this at the end of the day. But this is a sketch that we're working with, with CNH. This takes up probably the western half of the 12 acres. Some of the basin is pushed down to the southeast, southwest corner, next to the water tower. And it preserves the western half of the property for the water treatment facility and hopefully eventual future marketable parcel if you want to go that way.
So is the idea to basically site the fire station, then worry about water treatment?
I think so. We, once we were meeting with HKGI, Black and Beach, and CNH Architecture and all the staff to kind of talk about that.
Okay, access isn't as important, obviously.
Right, that's, yeah, yeah, yeah.
Access is the killer tomorrow's on 179th. Right now on the street, we've got the RFQ for a construction manager, so this went out a couple of weeks ago. This is just the image of the first page of that. So just like we did for the first center, we're looking at hiring a construction manager for this project. It's good to bring them on now because they're the ones that do all the construction cost estimating. So as we get more refined in our design, the construction manager will also be able to tune into that number of where we're going to land on the construction costs. And we can adjust from there, up or down from that cost, depending upon what the, the construction manager comes up with. So the deadline for that is Monday, so we'll be looking at interviewing a couple of firms there and hiring a construction manager in the next few weeks. That'll be pretty critical to get them on, get them up to speed on the project.
Is there a lot of firms open that do this, or is it pretty limited?
Yeah, we've got five right now that are probably going to submit.
Okay.
Which is great. I mean, that's good interest. Hopefully they'll be sharpening their pencils on that. There's some that are more experienced in public safety facilities and fire stations, which would be a plus as well. So moving forward, as I mentioned, we'll close on the property hopefully this Friday. It might be Monday or Tuesday before we do that. Picture all the paperwork is in order. But it's scheduled for Friday, for Friday for now. After we close, we're going to demo the existing buildings of the site. We've already done a phase one and a phase two evaluation out there. There was two septic systems found in an underground fuel tank. We were aware of all of that when we negotiated the price of the property. So that just confirmed that they were where we, we thought they were. And preliminary results show that they're clean, that the, the tank is not leaking and it's, we're okay. So we'll know more when we dig into it, but it looks, the results are good so far. So we'll demo the, the site and get it cleaned up later this year. And again, the project will bid it hopefully at the end of this year, end of this year, beginning of next year. The spring construction and operational by 2027.
So when you say clean, that just means it's not leaking. It could have residual fuel from those tanks and still be considered clean as long as it's not leaching out?
Correct. Yeah, as long as there's no leak in that tank, we're good.
So how old was the diesel fuel, do you think, in the tanks that we found at the first center?
That's a great question.
70s, I guess is what he said.
Yeah, I wonder, were we using that fuel trucks and then we used cap?
There was a floor of concrete over those tanks, so nobody knew there really was.
Okay.
Good day.
The map that you show, it's sort of, there's a little, like a triangular plot right next to the Grand B and dot at that northwest corner.
Yeah.
For the, yeah, yeah. So is that, did we already own that? That's already city?
Yes.
Okay.
So the corner.
So we're just kind of reuniting with that acquisition.
Why did we all own a slipper of a pie?
It was left over from, I think, the construction of Grand B.
Oh, okay.
I think it was a portion of the townhomes. And we're going to be cut through. It was sliced off by the townhomes.
Do we own slippers all over the city like this?
Yes.
Gotcha.
Green space.
Lots of green space.
Yeah. You could buy some. In fact, you know, if you were another city, Enterprise and City, probably both summer period, call it something. Neighborhood park, Grand B Neighborhood Park.
Is there a man in the dog park?
We'll need it. We need it for practice.
Other questions? We'll report an update on that too. Thank you.
Yeah.
That does have a hat.
Don't look ahead. Mayor, Council, before we turn over to Austin to kick it off, this was identified as part of your retreat. This year is an item. We just thought it'd be a good time now before Panaprog and before the summer. And, you know, we have a couple of goals out of this. One is to be sure that you are comfortable with the preparedness and our plans and how we handle emergencies when they come up. It's also a chance to talk about, but your roles would be in emergencies, communications, operations, things like that. So, so I'll just turn it over to Chief Austin and he'll kick us off.
Yeah, we'll get it started here. So, you know, when we look at the why, why we're here, just touch on a little bit, but we want to just provide a little bit of a snapshot of how this could look. You know, we've got an hour or whatever it is, we're not going to be diving in super deep on logistical details. But we want to just kind of provide a tabletop that we work through together, have some dialogue on, prompt some questions. Maybe identify some issues that we need to work through and work out outside of this space if, if we're stuck on a few things. You know, the emergency operations plan of the city, which is also the same as our national incident management system. It lists five key goals out of any catastrophic event. We talk about pooling all these resources together, which is our city resources, but also most likely external resources that are pouring into health. Our priorities are maximizing the protection of life and property, stabilizing the incident or incidents, effectively responding to any emergency or disaster. Ensuring the continuity of government and continuity of services as we still have the rest of the city to, to take care of and run. And then kind of the final stage is providing the recovery and restoration of services. So those are kind of the goals to keep in mind. That's what our function is as a, as a city during these events. And just touching on kind of who's here and their role and their connection to this. You all know, most of us aren't these folks, but a couple of maybe new faces. But obviously, Tierney Elmers, Communications Team, would be very involved in any event. Communication is a, is a key aspect which can greatly assist us through something or, or hamper us if it's, if it's not more of this. So her role is, is key. Chief Meyer is our city's emergency management director. Each city by statute has to have a designee and that's his position. So he's got a crucial role as well. He's got some help, but he's in that kind of point person's role. Lieutenant Jeff Hanson is, he sits on our domestic preparedness committee, a countywide team that, you know, tries to get ahead of these issues. Put some of those partnerships in place ahead of time, works through some, some exercises of their own. And then Lieutenant Thorau has done a number of tabletops and exercises with community partners that have asked for just some guidance with some active threat things. And so he's used to kind of facilitating these and working through these. So that's, that's who's in the room. And just three kind of ground rules we want to lay out to help. And just three kind of ground rules we want to lay out to help us maybe be as efficient as we can be tonight. Give Councilmember Virmo credit. I stole these from him after sitting through a presentation he did at the Palms last week, but I think these really helped. Number one, there's no right or wrong. We're not here to try to trick anybody. We're not going to throw some crazy questions at you. That's not the goal. It's to just provide some information, maybe interject some twists or some challenges along the way. It's just to provoke thought and have some dialogue. If we get stuck on an issue rather than getting hung up, we've got kind of a digital parking lot design that we can just kind of shelve that and maybe identify that as something we need to work through as a group, or certain parts of our team need to work through that later. And then don't fight the scenario. We're not trying to create some, you know, crazy thing that could never possibly happen. But part of this is interjecting things that we need to try to work through. So try not to get too hung up on, well, that's impossible, and that doesn't make sense. There probably might, very well could be things that aren't perfectly making sense. But in a general, in a general sense, it's certainly a plausible scenario. So with that, I'll turn it over to Chief Meyer to work through the next step.
So I'll take you to the sheets for...
I'll give you your whole packet.
Okay. On the back page, just to give you a high level view of your role and your responsibility, you have to be comfortable. All right, line print in front of the backs or page two?
Back to the page.
Okay.
So I just want to make sure from, for your, your role in an emergency, what are those key spots that you, you know, US Council and Mayor are going to be playing? Obviously, public communication is that we're going to be looking to provide that public message to our community in a timely fashion. Record allocation, and that, that means more of approving, you know, the funding that's going to be needed potentially for that, ensuring that we have those structures in place to make that thing happen, you know, having water, electricity, transportation, community support, just because you have a strong connection within the community as elected officials to be out there. Policy decisions, obviously, these are going to be the kind of the bigger topics of if there's a change in our current city policy of how we manage or look at something. Implementing those from a temporary regulation or emergency measure. And the same kind of follows back to that decision-making, authorizing the emergency measures for road closures and such. And kind of I touched on that the policy keeps coming back up, but all the adjustments. So in the past, we've had the whole debris management of do we stick with that policy or do we need to adjust it for businesses? And then longer term, is that recovery relief effort? How are we going to provide that funding, rebuilding effort? And such for our residents and our businesses? So that's kind of a very high level view on that. I'll get over to you.
Thank you. So I will be laying out the scenario. If you looked ahead, the scenario's changed a little bit, so. That's what it is. That's what happens. So after I read the scenario or lay out the scenario to you, I'll pause, answer any questions. Then I'll talk about what law enforcement, fire and EMS's initial response would be. After that, we'll provide you with essentially a 24-hour post-impact briefing. So as if we were sitting in this room 24 hours post-incident, what do we have going on the ground, where do we know as of right now? And then we'll work through it from there. So to get started, on Sunday, June 27th at 4:42 PM, the city of Lakeville was struck by a powerful EF5 tornado during a highly populated evening timeframe. National Weather Service has had issued a severe thunderstorm watch earlier yesterday afternoon, followed by a tornado warning just 10 minutes before touchdown. Although outdoor warning sirens were activated, the rapid development and path of the storm caught many residents off cover. The tornado carved a 10-mile path through the southwestern quadrant of Lakeville, lasting nearly 18 minutes. It first touched down in a semi-rural area, but quickly moved into a dense residential subdivision, then through a retail corridor and directly impacted two public schools, including Lakeville Elementary, where approximately 80 children and 12 staff members were present for summer school programs and sporting practices. The damage was catastrophic in several areas. Over 1,200 homes, we believe, are damaged or destroyed. A two-story apartment complex suffered a partial collapse, trapping residents under debris. An industrial warehouse was flattened with four confirmed employees being, four employees being confirmed killed. A big box retail store, for scenario purposes, think about Walmart, is severely damaged during peak shopping hours, resulting in numerous injuries and multiple deaths. Emergency responders faced dangerous conditions with downed power lines, overwhelmed 911 systems, and significant road obstructions. As a result of this, and despite their efforts, the initial impact and secondary hazards led to significant loss of life and many people injured. So that's the scenario that we're, we're going to be working with.
I know this sounds really stupid, but what does that mean? Secondary hazards lead to significant loss of life?
So the initial impact was the tornado. The secondary hazards that, that responders faced were your downed power lines, your trees. So our inability to even get there to...
Just to end, let's hear it. Okay.
So then moving on from that, obviously, police, fire and EMS would be responding immediately after the tornado touched down at 4:42 PM were activated. 911 call, call volumes surged with reports of collapsed structures, missing persons and injured residents. Within minutes, police, fire and EMS units deploy to the most heavily affected areas based on preliminary damage assessments and the call data that we're receiving from citizens. First-respecting officers began clearing roadways with the debris to allow access for more emergency vehicles, while also trying to perform rapid triage, rendering basic food aid and searching for survivors that are still in danger. Simultaneously, first responders are also establishing an initial perimeter around high-risk areas to maintain scene safety and to prevent public from getting into there and possibly becoming one of the injured. Fire and rescue crews focus on high-priority lifesaving operations. So they're at the apartment complex and Lakeview Elementary, which are both heavily damaged. Firefighters initiate search and rescue operations, they call in mutual aid for structural collapse response and heavy rescue equipment. Fire Command establishes a forward operating base near the school with triage zones, generated power, light, lighting, and coordination points for incoming mutual aid. Again, downed power lines, gas leaks and small fires complicate their efforts, requiring coordination with utility providers and hazard mitigation teams. Emergency medical personnel are also facing a mass casualty incident. As a result of this, they establish triage tags and staging areas near each major damage site. A line of ambulance units are quickly overwhelmed, prompting, prompting automatic mutual aid requests in coordination with nearby hospitals for transport distribution. Medical triage officers prioritize transport based on injuries, injury severity, while mobile field units administer care to less critical patients on scene or at shelters. So throughout these first few hours, coordination between agencies occurs through our 800 megahertz radio system and our city's emergency operations center, which was fully activated by 8 PM post-storm, so about three hours later. Unified command is then established to manage the city-wide response, allocate resources and begin organizing shelter and family reunification operations. And for context, unified command is simply just a structure that is used in emergency incident management when multiple agencies and jurisdictions are responding. And it allows all of these entities to work together under one roof so that communication isn't stifled and that resources are getting to where they need to go as quickly as possible. So that, that...
Do we, does the city already have ideas where they would be at?
Where we would be at in an incident like this?
Where a unified command structure would be held?
Yeah, so our, our primary location would be at the police department is where we would set up an emergency operations center.
Oh, I see. Okay.
And in that center, all of the stakeholders in whatever response, there would be so fire personnel, EMS personnel, police personnel, any responders from would be in there.
Okay.
So they can all collaborate and move those resources to where they need to be.
Okay.
Does anyone have any questions thus far?
I only had one more. And I hope I'm not violating the third rule. So the tornado hits our city, but it's going to move to other cities. And you said that we would be asking for help or whatever. How far can we go to ask for that help? In, in case, let's just say Lakeville gets hit, so does Farmington and Apple Valley, you know what I mean? Because it's, you said it was a five, so it's not going to just hit type of thing. So how far can we gather resources?
So in an incident like this, we would be probably receiving mutual aid from literally all over the metro, probably all over the state of Minnesota.
Okay.
And for this scenario, tornadoes can act funny, and this one does live up. So it is just Lakeville.
Oh, I'm sorry. Okay. See, I violated number three. Sorry.
Can you describe the difference between unified command and the emergency operations center?
So an emergency operations center would just be, say, an area where we're maybe just, Lakeville is conducting business. Unified command is where we're bringing in multiple agencies from different jurisdictions that we're all able to communicate in a unified command. So we can communicate effectively with medical personnel, we can communicate effectively with fire and all at once, all under one roof.
One thing I'll add is like the EOC, consider that as unified command is closer to the scene or that piece. And any request like we need more X, Y and Z, whatever that request is, that resource is flows to the EOC. And then the EOC figures out how we're going to get that resource there to them, if that makes sense.
Is there ongoing communication? So you said like a retail location, a lot of retail big ones have their own command centers. And how much, how much interaction usually happens between the city and their targets, corporate command center, or making sure that they're supplying the resources and stuff like that?
I'll, you know, jump on that. So from like, kind of falling back to that unified command. So if Walmart is our example, is that we find their store manager or a manager for them, we bring them into the unified command portion and then start asking questions regarding what resources can they help with their store? Or what do they need to get them back online, so to speak, and account for people and so on and so forth? So they would be our resource to use to go to their command piece for their company or their business.
Good.
Same with school personnel. They would be likely in this incident brought in as well.
Do you table top, this aside from this, do you table top at the school district? You guys have?
We have, not specifically against storms, but more active.
So there's like protocol on how you engage with each other?
Yeah. Yeah, it's important that, I mean, you're coordinating resources, but you also want everybody hearing and sharing the same information. That can be challenging, you have all these stakeholders. I mean, fortunately, like the school district, we have a really good ongoing, we have a natural working relationship. You don't always know when these things will be impacted and, you know, is there already something set up? So that can be a challenge at the outset. But some of, you know, national retailers have access to a lot of resources. And so trying to tap into those and steering those in the right places is important.
Good. Thank you.
Okay, so we have the incident and we have EMS, fire and law enforcement's initial response. So now we're post-incident, say 12, 24 hours. And we're giving Mayor, City Council a briefing and a post-impact update. So right now, we know that we have 26 confirmed fatalities. Eight of them are children, two adults that were at Lakeview Elementary. We have four residents that were killed in the glass apartment complex, four workers that were killed in the warehouse, three shoppers and two employees at the retail center, and three individuals that were trapped in their vehicles on city roadways. We also, on top of that, have an injury estimate for you of between 175 and 225 residents. Out of those, approximately 40 of them are in critical condition that were transported to various trauma centers throughout the metro. We have dozens that were treated for blunt force trauma, lacerations and crush injuries. And then just to add some context to the scenario for, for you. The main city facilities, including city hall, are all currently operating on backup power. Cell service is severely limited as two towers were destroyed, making family reunification and emergency coordination even more difficult. We have over 500 residents that are displaced or without shelter, and hotels are at capacity within hours of the storm. The city has activated its emergency operations center with unified command. Social media posts are going around and local news is amplifying community fears, raising questions about the city's preparedness, its siren timing and school safety protocols. We have family, family members of missing and or deceased that are using social, social media to try to locate family, and they're demanding city officials tell them if their family members have died. This tornado has become Lakeville's most devastating natural disaster in modern history, triggering a full-scale emergency response. And so that, that, that's the information we're going to give. Obviously, there is going to be challenges that come your guys' way. And I'll hold, we'll hold for any question and then questions. And then Thor and Mike are going to kind of facilitate that conversation.
Okay, so for council's consideration, using this question to generate a conversation between you. What are the key issues that the city council would be facing in this first twelfth office?
People are going to be asking us for information that we either don't have or should be speaking about. So it's going to be basically keeping people patient. But yeah, there's going to be a lot of questions to which they're starting. They're going to be micro questions when you got this whole big, big thing.
It's an enormous scenario. When, I attended a training years ago and it's simplistic, but it's helped me a lot, especially when I was a street supervisor of the acronym WEN. What's important now? That changes based on where you are in your scenario. But that is something that has helped me substantially when I was on tactical, something that's very supervisor. Especially as we move through the time.
So that kind of went on for my, what's important now? What, so within four hours, you might even be getting told, like with the city council number, what's important now? To calm the citizen, to let them know that we're using all our resources that we have available to get to the, you know, to areas as fast as we can? I mean, I'm, I'm trying to figure out what, what is important now, when, I mean, or how you want us to communicate it. As my thought process is you want to try to be as calming and caring as you possibly can be. But the unfortunate part is that I'm not doing your job, so I really, in some ways, I'm kind of out of the loop. I, I have trust and faith in what you're doing, and I have to relay that. But I have no knowledge of what you're doing. Does that make sense?
It makes absolute sense. The, go ahead. What you're referring to is the, the people on the ground. You're trusting that they will be handling the situation.
You're trusting that they will be handling the situation. And. That is not the minutia that you would want to get involved in, correct?
Right.
And that's accurate. You're at a much higher level. So I, I think Mr. Lee was about to comment, but one like. The. Communications, it seems like you're anything happening in communications. Right? So we would need to facilitate communication. And we would need to decide what we need to decide. So in communication.
Well, we want to probably schedule some, some planned comms whether and how those are going to go out, whether that's the TV, social media, whatever. And then what do we know right now and how are we planning for the next 24 hours? So things like clearing roads to get to people, restoring electricity, essential services like that. Cause we can't. Get to everyone or rescue, do the recovery operations without something that's basic essentials, so. Communicating what we know now and what our plan is in the near future. Probably what I think we would want to know if we're in a 24 hour meeting right now.
From the mayor's perspective, what's one of the key things that you need to do in your position?
Well, I think there's need to be unified voice on behalf of the city and then. Act as, you know, an M C that we have the expert from emergency management, Dakota Electric, Cell, or whoever it is. They're able to answer the nuts and bolts questions related to each of those things. Have we talked to the Red Cross? Have we talked to the governor? Make sure that we've got all of our ducks in a row. I think that's probably the most important and not straying away from, from that.
So right on. From the emergency manager, I'm going to be coming to the mayor saying we need to declare emergency. A city emergency. Just from a background, from, from the operations plan is the mayor can declare that, but it's only for three days. And then, then you have to formally declare it as a city council and then turn that, turn on the spigot, if you will, for the county to get engaged and the state to get engaged. Cause ultimately it becomes a funding mechanism if it's a federal disaster and state as far as supplying that, but. And who would be, and I'm just. Acting, so if it's not you, then the acting mayor can do that. So there, there is a reason beyond just who's the acting mayor in place of you to.
Right.
Of not just running the meeting, but there is a formality that for that piece of it.
And that's just a sign declaration.
Yep, it's built into the yield, the emergency operation plan, so maybe we would just print that out and.
If you remember, Mayor Anderson did it during COVID.
Yep.
Like a lot of every other cities did, then you held a meeting to do that. Besides, uh, one of the things that does is it allows us to do some things outside of the normal bidding requirements. So if we have an urgent need for pork load or whatever, we can go do that without.
Get the resources. Is that a state law thing for three days?
Yep.
And as I mentioned earlier, like curfew, so while we're in that, if we need to set a curfew so that we don't have people out, out whatever that time set is. Also it opens or helps with the financing as far as the cost of going, what we're going to have to do to recover from this.
So when do we get notified? I live on the other side of the city, you know, sirens have gone up, but I have no idea what the damage is over here. When do we get notified and if cell service is an issue, how, how do we get notified? To that the processes. That it was bigger than we thought and we're going to go into this emergency situation. So how do I get notified that?
Through, well, it'd be through cell service, through Everbridge is one, one means that we're going to alert you through an Everbridge that there's an event and we need you to report to the police department, to the E O C to, to be there for that piece of it.
Oh, okay.
That, that is one method that we'll probably use versus, you know, and it could be that Justin is making those phone calls saying. Experience this, whether, whether you are aware of it or not from, you know, the siren piece of it. And can you please come to the police station?
Okay.
One of the reasons I set up that group chat, you know, it's not, I don't use that except.
Yeah.
Important stuff, right? One, because it's probably just from an open meeting reason why, but that's one reason I can just get in touch. Real fast. And so it'd be either through that or through a phone call. If cell phones are down, that's going to be an issue, right? So we'll have to. Start to send people out.
House calls.
House calls or.
They'll come and knock.
Somebody, yeah, I mean, we start with the mayor, obviously. If we need to have a meeting.
That's how we would handle it as far as first responders as well. All of our alert paging systems could be impacted and we would be sending people out to the, out outdoors and. It's a worst case scenario, but it's, it's possible we could lose some of those connections.
Public Works does have radios still. Um, I don't know if your radios work later in the mega curse.
On sale.
Yeah, so I mean, there's some redundancy there. Obviously we don't have those.
It could be disconnected, right?
It could be.
We could be getting radios if there was something like that.
And one of the other things to consider when we talked about like if the mayor was, if one of the houses directly affected, he may not be available for 24 hours to, to summon that declaration so that someone else to consider. Yeah, just for those to see there.
In this scenario, my house is gone.
Yeah, and it's. I have to drag you first, Wanda, but I mean, uh, it wouldn't even have to be this big, but there's a good chance just people in the room could have an impact, maybe indirectly or indirectly, that's, you know, their life might be steered a different direction, the role as a, as a mayor, council member. Pretty many of us are our team, so it's a very real problem to have to work around.
One of the things that I always talk about is you have to take care of your family first, right? And part of that's being prepared so that if something were to happen, you felt comfortable, you could and that they're fine and you can come do this job, obviously, so. You know, have that emergency kit or. Full prep or if you want, but, um, you know, just be insured. Obviously, we wouldn't expect anybody to leave an emergency at your house. That's priority number one. Just like someone or first responders might be in the same situation.
Sure. So the, the follow-up question. We've covered on what would, what would you be facing as challenges for the first 24 hours? So we'll move, we'll move forward and ask you to consider what your challenges would be in the days after the disasters passed, those 24 hours. What do you really primary challenges of the council would be? Those following days.
Yeah, I mean, I think it's ensuring that we have the resources, right? So whether it's county or state, in this case, probably state and federal, it's, it's a pretty big disaster as, as things go. And whether those are private or public and making sure that's on gauge, trying to get all the other partners that I mentioned before, the utilities and everything and probably need this scenario, either partnering with churches or the school district to get housing for those who are displaced. Right, to making sure that. All that's covered. Um, and then figuring out. You know, what's the, the long-term plan for the next, you know, 72 hours and figuring out how to get through that. That next decision before you even think about it, you know, everything else. And federal declarations can take a long time, so. You know, put it in those requests, making sure we talk to our members of Congress on step that we need. Extra support. And in that same time, then we have to have a meeting to actually officially declare the emergency.
How soon does Red Cross get involved in something like this?
Fairly quickly, so I mean, we use them frequently on a house fire, so we determine, you know, using that as example. So if the homeowner needs that assistance, we call, we get Red Cross started and they're with, they'll, they'll be there within hours. Now something. On a larger scale, I don't know what that would look like from an activation, they'll get people here rather quickly, but what level of support, I don't know how deep that would look.
Are they the organization that, um, if a family were to call that you would say, you know, contact Red Cross? I mean, where do you, people are going to want to know where to get some immediate help. Where do you, where do we send them for this help?
But I'd say, you know, using this as the example, so kind of a bigger picture is initially we have to put them in some type of emergency shelters. Uh, we have agreements within the, the emergency operation plan with the schools right now, so that. You know, Lakeville South is the example, maybe they're not a good example, where the storm hit the Century or McGuire might be that resource that we send people to for temporary until we can find something a little bit longer term. Now Red Cross would show up there and help start providing some of that assistance. So that's kind of where that goes. It's not, you know, it's not the city of Lakeville doing this, it's us as a community. So there is that partnership already built in with the schools. That's therefore that shelter use, uh, Red Cross to be listed as a shelter. Red Cross has a parameter or parameters that allows us that they have to go through into a checklist of does the school or our shelter that we've identified meet those criteria for them?
And does FEMA get involved in something this day?
They will, but it's going to be much later.
Much later.
I mean, you got to think of any disaster that happens, whether it's here or anywhere it is. Initially, it's going to be us as a city running it. Uh, quickly we'll pull in the county and bring in their resources to bear that state and then federal is going to be sometime further down the road, but we're going to be hauled on our own, so to speak, with just what we have within the state.
And so what you would give us as part of the communication is where to send people to get resources and timeline of. Cause electricity, utilities aren't going to be up right away and a kind of a timeline given from, let's say, Dakota Electric and the other company is, um, when they think that they're going to have power restored or, you know, those types of things. So we would have that information if somebody were to contact us that we would be able to convey it to. Correct? Yes, that would be part of. Is part of my, my section. Oh, I'm, I'm jumping ahead. No, that's okay.
I mean, a good segue, right, to, you know.
Yeah, I mean, clearly based on the scenario, we have a lot of questions, your point about. We'd have to be very clear and answer the questions on how the process works and why things happen the way they did when we get into it. In addition to then offering the information of where to go from there. It's clearly if we don't have a good answer on him and the siren, for instance, it's not going to solve any of the other issues that people are having. It creates more mistrust.
I understand. So the reason I bring this up is because it seems like in my experience as a city council person and formerly of a school board person, they seem to think we have all these. And. Um, and you never want to leave them with any, how do I want to say this? Doubts so that they don't feel. So that they're not uncomfortable, but you want to be able, you, you kind of get what I'm trying to say? And so that's, I guess that's why I'm asking these questions is because of, in my mind, I'm trying to figure out how to service the citizens of Lakeville because they're going to come to me and expect me to actually narrow in and try to fix their immediate problem, which I can't. But I have to make them feel as though I'm trying to. And make it broader as I'm trying to help them, if that makes sense.
That's where Tierney and her staff will come in and we'll, you know, and I'll let her kind of run through that, but coming up with what is, what is our messaging and how does that look and I'll turn that over to you.
Is there any other things to mention?
Yes.
Thanks, Tierney.
Before we go into comms, can I ask one more question about from a council action standpoint? Are besides the state of emergency, are there any other formal actions that are required to activate staff and funding? Or does that? That covers everything?
Yeah. A curfew that's issued, does that have to be? That would have to be a council decision, um, but under your, under your state of emergency.
That's kind of where the, the second page, if you will, the role of responsibilities of coming back and saying. We need counsel to formally declare, you know, the emergency, but then we want to implement a curfew rule and a resource for the funding allocation, stuff like that, so it's not, not all hitting you at once as those things develop, we'll probably come back and start asking the questions or looking for. We need to add this into that piece and then we would need council's formal actions for that.
And do we have the ability to bypass public notice laws and stuff to do emergency meetings and stuff?
Yes. Yeah, I think it's 24 hour notice for emergency.
What is it for a regular meeting? I thought the three days.
I mean, one of the reasons. It's, we've all been in various emergencies of different sizes. One of the frustrations we've always seen is that the council wants to do more than what they need to be doing or what they should be doing.
Very little.
You feel like you, I'm not doing anything, I need to be doing something. And communication is going to be the biggest thing that you need to be doing. And Tierney's going to get into that as you're doing that. If there's one thing to remember, saying, I don't know a perfectly good answer when you're asked something at this point, right? Cause it's much better to say, I don't know, I can find out than to say something that is wrong or is too fast to be heard out there and gets out of head.
It's also okay to say there will be information coming out.
Right.
On our next press release.
And we're going to talk about kind of that cadence and the sketch.
Well, one other quick thing to, for the E O C, I mean. It's a really, the E O C isn't going to just stop after this, it's going to go on for.
Forever.
Like the E O C will be active for days if not weeks. And can you just describe really briefly some of the stuff that goes on, the different roles, what the, in terms? Cause I, I had the privilege when the bridge collapsed, I got to go work that. And the, um. The actual, uh, system there is, is really, it's really, it's, it's, uh, it's very, very functional. So in terms of what's happened in the E O C, in terms of planning, in terms of communications, in terms of resources, in terms of all those things. What people are getting.
So. Maybe a certain high level for like the E O C is, is operational periods. But typically you're going to do an eight or a 12 hour window, more than likely, and I'll say from like the Ciblomrest, we were doing 12 hour operational period, so there is, it's not always the police chief or the fire chief that is in charge of the E O C. It's an operational manager. He's, that person's kind of the high level. Coordinating everything that goes on and then it starts breaking down into, to kind of keep it simple. A finance area, so somebody that's tracking what are the costs of doing whatever that is that we're, the resources that are out there. So anything from equipment that we're renting to the staff that's being used to mitigate that thing, that, that situation. Then you're going to start working into the communications, you'll have law enforcement, a fire, EMS. Players in there, but then also bringing in what we mentioned, like the school district or if you got utilities that are affected too, you probably have Dakota Electric, Center Point, the gas companies are all going to have. Representatives within the E O C that we can pull information so they can give us a timeline of, hey, we're going to get power back up in the next 24 hours or that, so it's not. The, it's a pretty big umbrella of what's going on in there. Not everybody's always in an active role. So I've done, I'll say multiple drills with the coast companies, E O C, where you have multiple people playing roles in there. Finance, media. Now, the first responders, public works will be a huge role of what they're going to be doing. And the outside role, uh, community development as an example gets pulled in to help do donations and organizing with the churches of kind of who's going to be our center point for that, which church or group can we use? So every department in the city is going to have a role within the E O C. And to determine probably the heaviest ones that you're going to rely on is the operational side of things and the finance side of things, because we have to track that cost. Ultimately to get reimbursement from the state and such, just so that we know as a city how much it's costing us for that business. Does that kind of give you?
Yeah, and then it'll be different people with different operates, almost shifts.
Oh, 100%.
So, so we may assume you or, or any of you know something and you haven't met the E O C for 12 hours. And it might be somebody from the state of Minnesota's doing task force that's running the show.
Correct.
And so we, it's just for me, it's the communication is such an important thing that we don't get out the message. And that we realize too that if we ask. Mike or Brad, they may go, I, I invite out for you.
I think that's the, the job of the E O C and communications, you know, at the, at the end of it is say. You can expect a briefing from the E O C on what the current status is of that operation. That'll come, you know, from Tierney to Justin to you potentially.
Probably at the end of an operation.
Correct.
Sorry.
Question, so like as an example, from Niche, you had a big. Question. So like as an example, Vermighi had a big, you know, I don't think anyone was really injured as far as I know. Does that require the same kind of level of, you know, declaration that quickly, even though it's more just like?
Yeah, because it frees up your resources.
Yeah.
Start to do things.
And even in those, there's that initial period of the unknown, right? You get collapsed structure. That just takes time to work through to determine if there's casualties.
And that's a big piece of receipts and gap for information, incorrect information getting out on casualties is very problematic, as you physically imagine.
Thank you. To your question, Mayor, you know, obviously Vermighi is much smaller than Lakeville. So what can they, what's their capacity to handle that?
Right.
You know, so something, a storm event or, you know, minor high winds or something that hits Lakeville is probably a pretty insignificant event that we handle within a short amount of time versus, although a new market gets hit.
Right.
It's a whole different story for them where they have to go through a process.
Well, I just think of like when that night we had flash floods and wildfires, right? But because we had mutual aid, we were able to become the contributor.
Correct.
Okay. So a lot of the questions you had, I hope some of this helps a little bit. And I took some of this, um, I have two pieces to this. Some of this I took directly from some lessons learned. As I was in the joint information center with the JIC during Burnsville last year. So there are some little things that I put in here that would have made it to a kind of a different situation. So I tried to sort of turn it a little bit. And then at the end, a council member, oh, I, I found some interesting communications, um, data about how do you talk to residents in a, in a different way that I thought was really clever and important. And it can be used in any situation, whether it's crisis or not.
Okay.
That I thought is very simple, very straightforward. And I put it in context of sort of what you'll typically hear us say in a situation, but maybe what we should be sort of saying. It's, um, so it looks like I have a lot of slides, but I do not. I'll go very fast, I promise. And hopefully this answers some questions. And it's just, again, some lessons learned from situational things that I've been through. So one thing that we learned, I think, was just to stand up that jig immediately. Um, and I think with the EOC, if there's an incident, um, is getting that communication center set up as absolutely fast as possible and asking the neighboring cities, which is what we did in Burnsville, uh, for help immediately and to get those resources to that location. Um, and then to assign tasks and, and, um, everything that we're going to need. Um, and that's important because we want to create that centralized communications hub. So, um, we want, these are things that we put in place, but it took a couple of days. It's set up a crisis communications inbox. There's one inbox for all inquiries. Everything comes to that one inbox. So if you guys are receiving things, if city staff is receiving things, that's from the media or anywhere else. It goes to one inbox. That way, um, we can kind of parse through it. And all of our responses that have been developed, we'll get to that in a second, but those pre-written responses that have already been re-agreed. Then we can use those as the answers to media. And, um, we know that we are going to get a tremendous amount of media in a very short amount of time. They're going to want to know what's going on, how are things going to be handled? So we want those pre-written responses that have gone through the approval. Um, and getting the approval, um, set up, whoever makes those approvals, getting that set up ahead of time is absolutely critical. And that took us a little while to, um, lesson learned there. Yes.
So we get an email from the media forwarded that.
Absolutely.
So are you going to respond as forwarded?
Exactly. That's the best way to do that. Um, one thing that we learned is the media went to every single council member.
That's how they do.
And they, they hoped constantly.
Well, they called me if they never called people others.
Absolutely. And they just wanted to comment from anyone. And, and, and I get it. Everybody wants to make some sort, especially in that case, you want to make some sort of statement. But the best thing to do in any situation at that point, you don't have the information at hand. And it's just to afford it, especially in the early, the early beginnings, when you don't have a statement in your, in your hands. It's just to make sure that you forward that. Once we, you know, get the jig set up and you've got approvals, that's why it's important to get it set up very, very quickly. Is that we can get those responses out, we can get them out to you. Um, and that way you've got something to say. Setting up, uh, press conferences with one or multiple, um, spokespersons determined by the scenario or not scenario of the situation. So if it's a natural disaster, it might be multiple people, as you said, Mayor, it might be, you know, the electric company, it might be, you know, yourself, it might be the police chief, it might be the fire chief, depending on the situation. And then over time it will morph. Uh, we may not have you on next time. Or we may have, it might be, you know, Paul Ome at some point when it gets further down the line and we're just talking about cleanup. So there's different scenarios, situations, and then we'll determine that and we'll be flexible as we go. Consistency in messaging, we've kind of already talked about that. Uh, we stick to those approved messages. We used the hand messages, I hate to say hand, but the pre-written approved messages for media public. Of course, you don't have to read them exactly as is, but to keep close to those messages, that is critically important. Um, and just, um, designating those clear spokespersons ahead of time. This is also important for city staff. In Burnsville, media was coming up to, um, city staff as they were coming and going. That could happen in any situation, um, for even Lakeville staff and to remind staff that, we should not be having even informal, uh, press contact with, with city staff either. They don't need to be making contact, um, or they don't need to be making statements and they don't need to feel the pressure. They can just say, um, you know, contact our communications department, um, and they can, they can handle it. I did put this up here, um, with the other scenario in mind that there should be assigned family liaisons. If, if, um, if there is a case where a city employee is a part of the incident, that is critically important. And in the case of Burnsville, the fire and the police team, that were the only people that spoke to the families, no one else. No city council members or anything were to speak to that because they were inundated, obviously, with press and. So I just put that up there just to, as a kind of reminder for everyone.
So nobody wants to be the source that has withhold their name because of your operations.
You know, something I've thought about on that too is, um, we'll, we'll give you the, um, the material to put out. And a lot of you have pretty wide reaches. Something I was thinking about. Everybody who has a Facebook account or a Twitter account is going to be in the media's gaze, right? Because even if you don't think you're talking to media, you're just talking to your neighbor. How many times do you see it? They go on the Lakeville happenings and say, I just spoke with X, right? And there, that's just as powerful as giving it to WCC or anybody like that. So message discipline is the most important.
This I wanted to put up there, um, in terms of keeping you in the loop. This is critically important to make sure that either you're getting email updates or that you're a part of a briefing. That we are keeping you in the loop. We're explaining next steps, um, the reasoning, um, that we're providing you statements to share. These, that we are giving you pre-written statements that are approved for social media, um, but not to go any further than that. We already talked about that media queries for those. And then we'll talk about the rules, um, in just a second. And then, um, another critical role though, that is very important is if you do hear misinformation, to report that back to the JIC. Um, that's another thing that, uh, was really helpful is when we, in Burnsville, when we did hear things, we were able to go and deal with it right away. That was critically important and you all could, uh, help in that realm as well. Because it's hard to have your ears to the ground when you're sitting there trying to write messaging. And so making sure that we are dealing with rumors immediately is the best thing that we can do. And then, um, and that's the best way to, um, ensure that we're keeping, um, the public informed. Another thing that we learned was having, um, a really good web presence. Not putting out obviously any other information from the city at that time. This has happened not in Burnsville, but in other cities where they just had social media scheduled in their, you know, social media programs and it just continually kept going out. They forgot to unschedule it. It's very embarrassing. So there, you know, it's things like that that you want to make sure that you do. And maybe things that we might have on our webpage that might be, you know, not appropriate or that type of thing. To be sensitive to all those type of things. But to have also a web presence, start with a clean, very focused webpage. Don't add to it. That's one thing that we started to do in Burnsville was keep adding, you know, building on the events and things like that. And then it was like, this is kind of silly. Let's take the stuff that's done down because it was starting to confuse people. So don't build on that information. Just keep putting up information that's clean and clear. And then that's where you want to put information like, here's, um, helpful information, phone numbers, updates. Have a media specific, uh, page where they could have a packet of information. If, um, my team went out and actually took like eight roll maybe with a drone, I don't know. If it was appropriate, maybe that's where we put some images so that it keeps the media out of the actual signs we don't want them at. I don't know. Um, and then we, we are pre-proving those images. It's just an idea, but, um, and then it's, um, post-information, um, and I've got a little information on this as well, but the amount of community assistance from outside organizations that starts to come in is absolutely overwhelming. And so maybe there's information out there of how to help Lakeville, um, because that becomes completely unruly. And it's all very, very good, but you've got to have a way to organize that. And this talks a little bit about that. Specifically in, uh, Burnsville, they appointed one church as like the fake hub. And then, um, they coordinated all the other churches. So that was one idea that worked really well. Otherwise they had all the churches trying to talk to the city and nobody could handle that. There wasn't one person that could do that. So they had a good relationship, which, um, you know, police and fire department have. So maybe there's a church that can help coordinate. They were collecting money. People of course are going to want to send money. So, uh, we didn't, the city doesn't want to handle that piece, obviously. So they found a way to, um, have the churches collect money, but then they picked it up every day. So that churches weren't handling big jobs of cash and money, um, that they were depositing in and putting it into, if this happened to be the memorial fund. But they were picking that money up quickly. In the case of, um, again, this is more specific to, um, and the employee incident, but they needed, um, they actually needed a PIO for the fund itself. They didn't have a an information officer to help that fund. And they got overwhelmed extremely quickly and they didn't, um, they didn't have good IT support. So their lines became completely bogged down because people, soon as that memorial fund went live, they broke, their system broke, um, which is not surprising. But to think all that kind of thing through, same thing could happen here. If it was tornado, people would just probably clamor to help. That's just a Minnesota thing and probably, you know, a, an American thing. And then just use all of our, um, resources that we have. In this case, public works is huge in, in Burnsville. It would, obviously we would be huge here too in a tornado. Um, they would be terribly busy. Um, and then to use reputable organizations to help herd all of the help that comes in. And to, um, kind of corral that. And you guys can be very, um, central in helping organize that as well, um, and making sure that that is taken care of. The bottom line on all of this I've got there is move quickly on whatever is decided to do, do it really, really fast. Make a decision and move on it very quickly. And, um, this is kind of my last slide before, um, just the last piece on messaging. Timely operational decisions are really important. I know that you guys probably would be involved in a lot of this piece of it. But there's some influence here and part of this is just, you know, does cities, does city hall, are we open? Are we operational? Are we closed? This was not made quickly in, in Burnsville. And for good reason, it's not something you planned for. It was in the middle of a primary election. And they couldn't decide what to do, to be open, to be closed. Um, they had to call the secretary of state. Those are things that, you know, have to be dealt with, but you don't plan for those type of things. So if you're going to be, uh, if you're going to keep continuity of services, could we do it online? Those type of things. Those are things that all need to be brought up. Any questions up to that? Am I boring you? No, I'm not boring at all. Okay, good.
Tierney, just real quick.
Yeah.
You know, so going back to the, to the day of the incident or, you know, the immediate aftermath, we've all seen the press conference, right? And I think, I think our view probably is that initial one, the mayor or whoever's the head at that time is going to be the person that probably starts that, right? They're going to be the face of that crisis. Answering the immediate questions, express the concerns and the prayers, all of that. And then crisis dependent will turn over to the practitioners, right? That would be, that happens in that case, but also happens in some cases, depending on the scale of it, is you get outside people wanting to be there too, right? State officials, federal officials. That's something that we all have to coordinate and what's appropriate at the time. After that though, daily briefing to the twice daily briefings, most likely they're going to be operational in nature, right? So it's probably going to be people around.
How do we, um, communicate with our state reps since they're the ones that cover this community?
Well, I would think, I mean, we're fortunate that we have good relationships with ours, right?
Right.
You all have the contact information. That's probably a good spot for you to be sharing information with them. You know, that's something we would be. You know, that's something we would be talking with our state federal partners at the emergency management level. But from an elective standpoint, it's probably a good resource.
This was something that I thought was terribly interesting, actually. This is a little bit based on neuroscience. Um, and I think. This is nothing groundbreaking, but in a crisis, people are emotional, not logical. And we tend to, in crisis comms, hit people with facts and policies. And this is. Obviously it's not the way everyone else is thinking, which is going to cause that distrust and the confusion. And, you know, not the connection, uh, because that's obviously not how we're wired. So there's kind of this process that is called validate, relate and prove. It could be named a hundred different things, but it's really just to help people feel understood, seen. And heard. How many times have you heard though, in a press conference, the city is following all our emergency response protocols and coordinating with state's local partners. I mean, that's such a typical response. I could see myself actually typing that probably. So, but to, you know, to really kind of spin that around is, is an important thing to say. But to start with, um, and I could see you guys naturally just saying this. We've got a great council, but just to start with, you know, it's devastating, you know, to, um, to all of us to talk about lives were lost, homes were destroyed. This is an overwhelming time and then what, you know, we're going to be with you step by step. And then say, then you say, we're coordinating with state and federal partners. But to just kind of make sure that you're, you know, check yourself when you're talking, even when you're talking with people on the phone, even if it isn't a tornado. If it's something else, just to say, hey, I hear you. I know what you're talking about. And just make sure that you're hearing the constituents. Relating, connect what people care about most. Again, I can probably see myself typing this. We're working to support impacted neighborhoods across the city. That's a really easy thing to say. But maybe to connect a little bit more is, you know, it didn't just damage homes. It disrupted, you know, daily life. A lot of you might be figuring out where you're going to sleep tonight, you know? You're trying to help your neighbors. You're also probably trying to explain it to your kids. And that's what matters most here. And so you're trying to kind of connect with them. Again, just keep self-checking. Um, those are things that are kind of important. And it's easy to get pulled into jargon, especially if it's something very emotional for us as well. Because you just want to, kind of want to just. Almost push yourself away from it as well. And we saw a lot of that in, in Burnsville, obviously. And that's why it was good to bring in other fresh communicators that could help distance a little bit. And try to write some of these more relatable statements. And then prove. Again, it's easy to say, we're doing everything we can to help. It's, it's much better to be able to say, here's the next steps. You know, we're posting recovery updates every day at 10 on the city website. And then of course we need to follow through with that and make sure they're up there at, you know, nine 58. And on social media, if you need immediate help, I just kind of made this up, call 211. I don't know. Or visit the heritage center. That is also made up, which is staffed 24/7 with volunteers. That will help you with support services. Maybe that's something we come up with. And maybe that's where Red Cross or other organizations have, you know, tables set up. And that's where the volunteers are and all these organizations that can help you get connected with insurance and all kinds of other, um, or just be able to use a cell phone if you're lost your cell phone in the tornado. That type of thing. So that people can actually see real action. They can go someplace. They can get help. But that you're showing them, the city's doing something more. Here's, you know, we may not be able to personally help, but there's obviously other services. And you know, we can give you water and food and blanket. And again, why this works, uh, people can't observe obviously logic until they feel safe, emotionally safe. And that's nothing that we don't all already know. It's just hard when you're in a situation like this because you just want to cut to the chase. These guys are going to be busy doing what they do best. And then for the rest of us, we got to be able to connect the dots for people and get the information out there. But we have to do it in such a way that we can connect with people, um, and, and do a job doing that piece of it. And that's where, you know, we got to tamp down misinformation and. You know, Lakeville happenings, I wish we would just. But, you know, just say, hey, guys, work with us on this, you know? Maybe that's the relationship we need to have with them and say, help us put out good information. Let's, let's take down this stuff that doesn't work. And then my final thoughts. Um, so plan for a layered response. Power empower a small, very skilled team. We found the right communicators that, you know, worked really well together up in Burnsville. So there are really, really good communicators in case. I get taken out because it was scenario was, you know, actually. So, um, and then just protect public trust through the different ways that we know how to do that. That's all I have. And I appreciate you guys letting me be a part of this scenario and. Thank you.
It's awesome. Is there any way we could get a copy of that?
Yeah, for sure.
Do you think you would be pulling other cities' communications people to help in a scenario like this too?
Absolutely.
So you'd be taking, you know, shifts on how and writing content with more than. So I just can't imagine trying to, uh, to do that.
Yeah, there's no way.
What efficient team that you have.
Yeah. And I already, I already told Chief Paulson that, you know, if something happens to me, God forbid. But, you know, I'm going to be in my basement. So.
That's good.
If something happens to the house, it can fly away, but I'll be here. With my dog. But, um. You know, there are really good communicators that I'm sharing names with that. You know, there's a Dinah in Bloomington and those are the people that I would call and say, can you be here? And I know they would be. Um, those are the people that we counted on in, in, in Burnsville. There was so good. And you just have one person that's working media and you have one person being a writer. And you have one person that's, you know, and you set up desks like that. And it just works like a dream. And you have one person that's sending out information to the city staff. One person that's working with you guys directly. So that's kind of how it, it works, but you definitely need a village.
Number from us, do you guys have any questions for us about the scenario or any responses?
Well, just.
Do we have, let's say if the police department is destroyed, we have, what's the next? What's our redundancy in some situations?
I'd say the nice thing in today's technology, you know, we used to have. Box of the computer sitting at PD, but.
Yeah.
The way that we are today is that we can literally say central maintenance as the example is we'll be in the conference room there or fire station one, or, you know, the biggest piece is going to be. Does that building have backup power if we're running generators? Can we, can we sustain there? I think we've made some, some very good moves to do that, you know? So any call it city facility is going to look well for an EOC. It's just a matter of making sure that we can fit our needs there. Or it might be multiple places that one function of the EOC might be in central maintenance and one might be at the water treatment. It's all, all what's going to work for that.
We have any pre-existing contracts with like debris companies? Like, okay, that's the first one we're going to call. Still we don't.
That would be more of a Paul only question. I'm pretty sure that we do. I know within the. Call the backbone of the EOP is that there are some listings of here's the vendors that we've used in the past.
We have, yeah, the, the free G's of the South Michigan.
Sure. Yeah, I mean, we have those.
Yeah.
Good relations. Tom Bregerman, our building guy, he has the license of HVAC contractors and that. So I think we'd be able to call him.
I mean, this could be good.
You know, one thing I was thinking about, we talked about the donations, um, just going back to an incident I was with. Those law enforcement related. I wonder if it makes sense to talk to the Public Safety Foundation about. When something like this were to happen for them to be the central point because it'd be tax deductible. They could probably set up a sub file pretty quickly. That'd probably be a good spot. We should probably talk with them and see if we can just kind of have that on.
I think they'd be willing, certainly anything public safety related, which most things have some.
Because I think that website already has donations.
Are there other resources that we haven't pre-allocated that we need to think about? You know, from us. Is there stuff out there that we need to have on hand that we don't? Not even though, just throw them.
Well, I wonder if we just work through post civil unrest, the fence, which became an issue metro. We have a dedicated place now for county line for anybody that needs it's ready to go. And we're trained to, being trained to construct that, so.
But we feel like we've got all the equipment for people rescue between us and favor.
I think some of the, you know, keep it, keep it simple in some of my mind is like if we have to. Have staff that's working around the clock, where are the, you know, what are the necessities are going to need? You know, water, food, that simple stuff is making sure that we have supply of water on hand. And so you're not going to have a meal, so to speak, at Colonel Vars as an easy example. Having those things and I'll say, um, you know, we joke about a go bag, but if you're called into work and you don't know when you're coming back, you have your phone charger, computer charger. Those things that you can readily grab and bring with you. So I'll say, you know, I carry a backpack that carries my computer charger, phone charger. And I threw some food snacks in. So if I need it, I've got it.
One of the things that Tierney touched on a little bit is the continued services. So city hall may not be, maybe close to the public, but we're still all here trying to keep it operational. So, um, so my director of boards, IT communications. I mean, HR is a big role in some of the stuff too, but involves staff that, that whatever issues. But so we've got contingencies for a lot of that. IT, we've got duplicate servers for that. Our PD, we've got the main one here. So we've, we've built some of that redundancy into the system already, but. It's the hard part of if you close the city hall, it's to continue to, you know, it's. Be operating while everything else is going on.
Yeah, my only, my only concern is we've become so reliant on fiber networks and cellular. The go radio, or we just still have the go radio in the basement.
I'll go a little to Michelle's question earlier and, you know, you guys get informed. We can get to you guys, but how do you tell the other half of the city? And if the 911 system down, the call center that we use, whatever, cable, the call. Rogue call.
Yeah, every ridge.
Yeah, every ridge. You know, if that's down or if that can't reach people, then what do you do?
And I think most of it, code of 911 has contingency. I think it's Ramsey County, right? So if something were to happen there, a fiber line's cut or something, they've switched over there pretty quickly. So they have contingencies built into that system.
Tonight's scenario was about natural disaster. But I'm sure there are other buckets of things that, that these similar, um, steps would be applicable to. I think we know some of them, but I mean, I hadn't seen other emergencies that, um, not thinking of. I mean. Social unrest is one that we got the COVID stuff that required some response there. But I mean, what are some of the other scenarios we? Should be thinking about. Point this to.
Oh, the one that, you know, panophs coming up, a parade, you know, if somebody were to. Drive a truck for the panoph parade, you know? That would be bad, right? But the good thing about this system is the command structure is the same, right? So how you implement it is different, but you have to sink roles and responsibilities. Your role as key communicator is going to change depending on if it's a. Tornado or a shooting, they're still going to ask you to be those communication pieces, just like we're going to ask them to do their jobs. You guys think, I mean, I'm just, there's a shooting, natural disasters, civil unrest.
Something related to the railroad, you know, that transports acids, chemicals. There are good circumstances with the disaster related to that.
Sheriff's Department related.
Just from Panoph perspective, you know, in the background, we do run a command post. For that running roughly from Wednesday to Saturday. So there is. Police, fire, EMS, we're kind of all partnered together overseeing what's happening and communicating with each other as far as we need more resources or what does that look like? So that we've done this, it'll be our third or fourth year of doing that as, as it's continually gotten bigger on us. So.
And interestingly, when you think of any crisis or any disaster, any emergency event, all of the same systems are leveraged, just in different ways. Communications, police, fire, public works, they're all getting utilized almost no matter what scenario you're in. Sure.
And there's the world ending one, the EMP.
Best laid plans there.
You're all on your own.
A multi-day blizzard, you know, that would, that's not unlikely here.
Sure.
Was this helpful?
Yeah, sure.
Yes.
And I think, I, you know, I think it's important that we do this. Every 18 months or if there's an internal reelection, you know, just to refresh, certainly with new people and.
Well, especially because look at all that information she got from Burnsville.
Yeah.
You know, just going through these different scenarios and gaining that knowledge from somebody else's crisis. Will, you know, improve our crisis response.
And learning, I mean, to that point, learning from, from other people is huge. We do it all the time. And most, if not all, we probably do that, things happening across the nation. But you may see a mayor address the community and think, wow, that was awesome. That was a really good job. Or vice versa. Uh, and we see what law enforcement, we learn tactically, we wouldn't do that. And so I think just having an eye open for those things. If that prompts questions of any of us of, hey, how would we handle that? But to answer those as best we can too.
You're right, Luke, any turnover and a council.
For sure.
Is going to change the whole dynamic of our council. I mean. We're. We're a great group right now, but, um, you know, but one different person changes the whole dynamic. And it's really important to be, I think, to be checked for that. So. Yes, you know, my thought process is that we're really lucky right now because. We're fortunate. That we've gone through this and if something comes up, I have all the faith in my fellow council members. In the fact that they will adhere to this, you know, guideline and not, um, decide to become the media spokesperson because they want the limelight or something, you know? Or try to fix a problem that they shouldn't be fixing, you know? But I think it's really important for the new people to realize, especially anybody really new to. An elected position. On, there's a lot of things, just because you're an elected person, you can't fix it.
And I can remember, does the league just do basics on this when they do the new elected?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's been a long time.
The county periodically does some elective. The county periodically does some elective official or emergency management training.
I went to the last, it's been a couple of years.
Yeah.
They just had one recently, but I think they ended up canceling because there was no roll turnout for it.
So if that pops up, pops up again, we'll be able to share that.
Yeah.
There's also some basic online training for how this whole system looks.
Yeah, at one point, EMO was requiring councils to take that, the eligible birth. Oh, sorry.
Yeah, certain, you'd have certain staff too. Or hundred, five hundred, two hundred. One hundred, two hundred, seven hundred, eight hundred, I think, would put it in sequence, so.
Why would you do one, two, three, four?
Because there's a three hundred and four hundred series that you offer, but that's more high level hurricane, something like this, that you wouldn't want to go to.
Yeah, and I'll, you know, I'll just share that, when I, this, we had a long conversation as mayors about this in Tampa over the weekend. Mayor Norland and Mayor of Tampa both spoke about how, you know, she went from having terrorist attacks, Sugar Bowl, Super Bowl draw, all of this, this week, and her biggest takeaway was like leaning on other regional partners, making sure the feds are involved, the state is involved, it's locally managed, right? They're federally funded, state-supported, that one. Right, the Super Bowl.
The World Series or?
Yeah, that's right, the Commonwealth World Series for sure.
Sure.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Uh, committee updates or?
We had nine thirty-five school. We did uh.
This is gonna be closed.
Yeah.
Four ninety-four and thirty-five.
It's gonna be closed, the alliance particular, I think, July and August off, so, yeah, it'll be closed. I didn't all turn it off.
It's totally the city.
Yep. Isn't it going any further?
Um, there's some turnover, and they'll let Carrie Callahan resign from her position, so, who you met. We're up there. She'll be in the interim, we'll be taking over.
Okay.
Others?
I'll just, the one other thing I just want to share that everybody, um, at the US Conference of Mayors meeting on Thursday afternoon, we spent, about two hundred of us, we spent about two hours talking about personal safety, um, after it's kind of added to the agenda after what happened to, to uh, Oregon's confidence. And they had the police chief from Tampa kind of give some talks, a lot of stuff that Brad had talked about, but a few things that they just, you know, highlighted, one was thinking about engaging with some sort of online system to have your address and stuff removed. There's all these websites that have your home address and phone numbers out there, and so there's a couple of different opt-out websites, easy opt-out and delete me. There's a few associated, but they will try to scrub your personal information off websites. They said they should definitely do that. But then the other thing is they just said, if you're going to an event you're not used to going to or invited to something, just, you know, let your PD know and, you know, whatever. So that was kind of their, their two big takeaway that would apply, I think, to us. Some of it was other like, you know, executive detail and those type of things that really applies to us. But they said for events specifically to think about that. And then for, you know, you and I to have conversations with our kids about who you talk to at school, and also letting your school know where your kids go to school, and we, you and I can talk about it in a minute. Okay, then I'll take a motion to adjourn.
So.
Second. Also, the mayor say hi.
Hi.
Hi. Posed?
Adjourn.